The meeting of the May 8, 2013 Ascension Parish Planning Commission will now come to order. Madam Secretary, please note that Mr. Robert Burgess, Commissioner, is not present and all other Commissioners are present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'd like for staff members to introduce themselves.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lindsay Manda, Legal Counsel for the Planning Commission.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Michael Petty, Parish Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Tim Ward, Engineering.
Laverne Bouchard, Building Official.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work that you do for the parish. Agenda item number five, Chairman's Comments, I have no comments at this time. Number six, Public Comment, this is for items that are not on the agenda, that aren't open for a public hearing, they're limited to one three-minute comment per person. Madam Secretary, has anyone put in a card? Okay, thank you. Number seven, Approval or Denial of the Minutes of the April 10, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, there's one correction to the minutes. The staff has corrected the minutes, but they don't show in your copy. It's on page six of the minutes, under Commission Action. Just changing it to read where unanimously, the word unanimously is taken out, and the word continent is changed to contingent, and that's been corrected in the formal minutes. So with those corrections, I'll recommend approval.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Chivisi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ori, that we approve the minutes as corrected. Any questions, discussions, any objections? Okay, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number eight, A Public Hearing to Approve or Deny the Following Family Partitions. A, Lolita C Nakadi Property, Lots C1A and C1B. Mr. Quintma.
Good evening. Asking for Planning Commission approval of the following family partition, subdivision of Lot C1 into C1A and C1B.
Okay. And I see here that the staff has recommended approval. Any questions from Commissioners? Okay. This does require a public comment period, so I'll now open the, okay, well, we need a motion to have a public comment period.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Unless there's any objection, we will open the public comment. Do we have any cards on this? So we need a motion.
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Okay, the public comment is closed.
Comment on the partition item number eight?
Is that on the old history?
No. And if you'd like to make a comment, please come up and put a card right now, so we'll recognize you when the time comes. Okay, so for Agenda Item 8A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Nezal, second by Mr. Calendar. Any questions, discussions, any objections? Okay, the motion stands approved. Next item is 8B, Chester Diaz Jr. Property, Lots CJ, A, and D. Mr. Quintma.
Okay. It's another family partition to subdivide Lot CJ into CJ A and Lot D. And it's named Lot D because of the previous divisions south of the property, A, B, 1, and C.
Okay, and again, I see that the staff recommends approval, and they requested elimination of the T-turnaround, and that was no problem. Is that correct?
That is correct. The applicant also is requesting a variance that did not make the write-up, but that the 12-foot utility servitude be included within the 60-foot private access servitude. I'm sure Mr. Quintma can explain the history of this, but basically what it amounts to is, over a period of various divisions, the access servitude was 60 feet, required to be 60 feet in places with a 12-foot in addition, and then it was, at one point, the 12-foot utility servitude could be included within the 60 feet, and then they, the previous commission allowed, or would not allow, the 12-foot utility servitude to be included within that, so the reduction of the servitude went from 60 to 48 feet to take the 12-foot outside of it. We're, the, kind of the gist of what we're doing here is we're making it 60 feet all the way from the start to the end of the private access servitude, and allowing the 12-foot utility servitude to once again be inside that access servitude.
Any questions from Commissioners? Okay, again, we'll need to open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chivisi moves.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nezal, any objection? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have a card on this one? Then let's close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Nezal, we'll close the public hearing. Now, what is your pleasure for item 8B?
I move that we approve it.
Mr. Bishop moves that we approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calendar. Any questions, discussions, any objection? Okay, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Agenda, brings us to Agenda Item Number Nine, Public Hearing to Recommend Approval or Denial to the Parish Council of the Following Servitude Revocations. The first one, A is the Delane Martinez Property, Lots 4A1, 4B1, 4C, 4D, and 4E, Panama Manor Drive. Petition was put in by Delaney Martinez-Boudreau. Okay, would you identify yourself, please?
I'm Delane Martinez-Boudreau.
Okay, and explain what you're asking for here.
On some property that I own, we had a private road that was Utopia Lane that was on the paper, and after my ex-husband and I divorced, I got the property, and I have, the road is now adjacent to the one that was on the paper, on the original map. When we originally had bought the property, it, we built the house, when we were building the house, the surveyor had to do the division, and they put the Utopia Lane on the map as just a formality. It's never been used as a road, and we want to take that off of the map, because we use the, one, the Panama Manor Drive, which is adjacent to it, that is actually where the road is.
Okay.
There's never been any road where the Utopia is.
Okay. And I see in our information that there was no objection from any utility company, no objection from the Drainage Department. Any questions?
Yeah, question for the staff. The request was to revoke the 40-foot access servitude and the 10-foot utility servitude, and modify the 35-foot building line. The, no objection offered by the Engineering Department, only to revoke the 10-foot servitude? What about the other issue matters?
So, the Engineering Department looked at the utility servitude as, I guess, their portion of this. The access servitude becomes an issue, are we still providing access to the lots? And so, I think they saw that as more of a planning comment to address, revoking a private access servitude, and, you know, I guess, allowed us to make the judgment calls to whether access was being granted or not. So that's the reason why they didn't. The building line itself doesn't necessarily have to be spelled out necessarily through this revocation process, because just by virtue of eliminating the utility servitude and the access servitude, the building line is automatically going to modify itself when those are no longer obstructing its ability to be the standard setback. I will mention, as far as the letters received, we did not receive a letter from Entergy, from Cox, or from Atmos. It's not uncommon that we do not receive letters from certain utility companies.
How are they notified, Mike?
Through the application, by the applicant. The applicant is required to submit a letter to the addresses that the utility companies have provided us, is where, you know, to send requests such as this.
Certified, or just a regular?
We don't require it to be certified, and then the applicant, when they submit the application, is supposed to submit at the same time all of those letters. However, in this situation, I think Ms. Martinez.
Excuse me, they were sent certified. I had an attorney, Christian Avery, had handled all of that.
Okay.
And he returned the ones that were never signed for, and Entergy, the power is actually on the other side of the property, where Entergy, Cox, and E-Tail come in on the ditch side that borders the Moran subdivision. That's where those utilities come in, and on the road, Utop, Panama Manor, we have servitude for utilities on that road. We have a total of 60 foot on that one, and I have a revised map that was just filed last month.
Yeah, what I was gonna add is Ms. Martinez had an attorney do the process for her that actually began before our servitude revocation process was accepted by the council as the new process, and so I was gonna ask her to explain if Entergy provides power for the site, it may be because it wasn't actually, you know, within that servitude or whatever, they just didn't respond. But the scenario is, I guess, the way that she described it, the 60-foot Panama Manor Drive includes our now 12-foot utility servitude adjacent to it. So, you know, as far as the planning perspective, we don't see an issue, as long as the utility companies don't have, you know, utilities within that servitude. The access servitude can go away because it's being provided elsewhere.
And it's kind of vague when it says modify the 35-foot building line, what specifically is gonna be modified?
Like I said, that kind of comes with the process, so.
35 feet from the center of the road?
It's, it would actually drop to a 25-foot front setback, which is what's required by the zoning. That actually, like I said, by virtue of eliminating the utility servitude, by virtue of eliminating the access servitude, the building setback then becomes the typical scenario of the lot line, and you have a 25-foot front setback. And I think the intent all along for doing all of this is there's an existing mobile home on Lot 4B1, and an existing home on 4A1 that are in, that are actually encroaching the existing 10-foot utility servitude, as well as the mobile home is actually encroaching part of the access servitude. It's to clear up some issues with that, and I think it's just, the issue is, it's just cleaning up some things that have been done in the past.
So staff has no problem with this request?
Staff sees no issues with it.
Any other questions? Okay, this also does require a public hearing.
Move the open the public hearing.
Second, any objections? Okay, let's open up the public hearing. Are there any cards?
No.
Okay, so we'll need to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, so then the, what we have is a request to, for the servitude revocation, item 9A. What's your pleasure?
Move or approve.
Mr. Calendar moves.
We're recommending this to the council for.
Yeah, we'll recommend to the council. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions, discussions, any objection? Okay, motion carries. We will recommend approval to the Parish Council.
Thank you.
Next item is 9B, and this is a public hearing to recommend approval or denial of this servitude revocation. The parrot partition, Lot 1F1B1, 39319 Tommy Moore Road. Applicant is Mr. Michael Lee.
It is, but I am not Michael Powers.
Okay, please identify yourself.
I am Ashley Lambeth. I am the daughter of the owner of that piece of property, and I will be opening a business on that property. Michael Powers is our architect.
Okay.
And we are asking for the drainage servitude to be revoked, because we have to put a water-retention pond on that property, and it will actually be on that servitude.
Okay. And this is a drainage servitude, so the only letter we needed was from the Drainage Department.
That is correct. It wasn't a generic servitude, it was specifically spelled out for drainage. It is the drainage plan for the development that requires the pond to be, to be built, and in order to build it, that is the location of the site where it needs to fall. It's an issue where drainage will now be provided by the pond, so the servitude is no longer necessary, and so it's just a matter of getting rid of it so they can complete their construction.
Okay. Questions?
Still being used for drainage.
What's that?
Still being used for drainage, so.
Exactly.
You're not worried about access to it because of the private.
Exactly.
Property around it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's open up a public hearing on this one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any objections? Public hearing is open. Do we have a card on this? Okay. Close?
Move to close.
Second.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. So for item 9B, what's your pleasure?
I move that we approve.
Mr. Ori, Mr. Ori moves that we approve. Second by Mr. Calendar. Any questions, discussions, any objection? Okay, hearing none, the motion stands approved, that we will recommend that forward to the Parish Council for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item 9C, servitude revocation, Pelican Crossing, second filing, Lot 67. Myron and Willman, is it Purvo?
Purvo, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm Marion Purvo.
Okay. Okay, tell us what you're requesting here.
Well, we request the revocation of the 25-foot drainage servitude on the site of the property.
And this is a drainage servitude, and we have a letter from the Engineering Department, no objection to revoking the servitude. Questions of Commissioners? Public hearing?
So moved.
Open the public.
Second.
Second, okay, we'll open the public hearing unless there's objection. Any cards on this one? Stacy, okay. Close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. Josh, second?
Second.
All right. We're gonna have to come up with an easier process for opening and closing public hearings. Okay, so for 9C, this revocation, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Move or approve.
Second.
Mr. Calendar moves, Mr. Bishop seconds. Any questions, discussions, any objection? Okay, so that motion carries, and we will make that recommendation also to the council. Thank you for coming. Okay, that brings us to item 10, Staff Report.
So last month, we talked a little bit about some ideas that we've been working on for revisions to the subdivision regulations, and one of the directions that you guys gave us was to go out and find some real-world examples, and so Mike and I have been doing some research, and I'm not gonna lie, it has been difficult to find exact replicas of what we're talking about. There's a lot of examples of subdivisions that mix housing types, there's a lot of examples of subdivisions that provide open space, and sidewalks, and street trees, but most of those subdivisions don't do all of the things that we're talking about, and so that's one of the things that we wanted to talk to you about this week was, or this month, is if you've had a chance to go through the list, so that maybe we can bounce some of these ideas back and forth, of which of these ideas do we think are very sticky, and we wanna continue moving forward with, which ones did the mud maybe not stick on the wall as well, and we wanna maybe put that on a back burner and come back to it after we've worked some of these demons out of the system. And so I think that's where I'd like to start, is just going down the list, and real briefly, we don't need to spend an inordinate amount of time on each item, but if any of you had any thoughts, ideas, comments, concerns, if you've been talking to friends or other consultants about these ideas, let's try to get some of these ideas out in the open. So, the first idea about density and how it's gonna be calculated, are there any thoughts
And how is that different from what we currently do, as far as calculating the density?
So currently, a developer comes to the parish with a site that may be, let's just use nice round numbers, it may be 100 acres. That 100 acres may have some wetlands, it may have a water body, or a bayou, or a utility servitude, it may be encumbered with some part of a right-of-way, but today, that developer is able to count all 100 acres towards the number of units that they're allowed to put on that piece of property, and this language simply says that we're gonna need you to remove out, or subtract out, those parts of the property that aren't physically developable, and today, the language says, pipeline servitudes, right-aways, existing road right-aways, existing drainage servitudes, wetlands, and existing water bodies. So removing those from the growth side area to determine what your net developable area is for the piece of property, and then multiplying the allowed density based on the underlying zoning to get to the number of units.
Okay.
But we had the thought that if the property were accessible by trails, or somehow added to the amenity of the development, that we would count some portion of it.
Sure. We need to come to a number. The examples that I've been able to locate, basically, when there's a requirement for parks or open space, you can then count those parts of the land if they amenitize it, but it's not physically developable for residential.
Wetlands, for example, right?
Yes, sir.
Right-ways, certain right-ways?
Well, pipeline servitudes are right-of-ways. Basically, you can't build anything in them, and we're not gonna allow those to be counted to parks, I mean.
Although, just the view of a pretty wetland has some value.
Sure.
So, I think you ought to calculate that into it some way also, you know, even though it's not buildable, and you can't actually walk on it, but if you, I don't know, it seems like if somebody has 20 acres and 10 of its wetlands, that somehow, you know, it wouldn't increase the parish's or that area's density so much by having houses, more houses on the buildable part, because, you know, the whole area is, won't be very dense, if you calculate it, you know, the viewable part.
Right, well, I mean, in that situation, you've got 10 acres of developable land at our highest density, which is three units an acre, so that's 30 units. What you're trying to say, it sounds like, is that some other portion of that 10 acres of wetland, you should allow them to count towards the density, so allow them to get more than 30 units on that 10 acres.
I think that's what I am saying.
And so, the question is, is, you're increasing the, what we're calling the net density, above what's allowed by the underlying zoning, and so where's the happy place for that? Do you allow them to get to 3 and 1/2 units per acre? Do you allow them to get to four units per acre on the net developable?
I don't know the answer to that.
Right, because what that's gonna do is, in essence, increase the density, or the carrying capacity of what's left.
Within that development, but not in the parish as a whole, because if you could build on all of it, you would have been able to build on the wetlands. So, within that 20 acres, you wouldn't have any more houses than you would have had within the 20 acres, if you could have built on all of it.
I mean, sure, there's a cost to build on wetlands, and that cost is a mitigation cost, and they can.
Well, I'm not suggesting that you would build on the wetlands, I'm just saying that in calculating the density.
Right.
So you would, could you, in this case, the 10 acres that you would have that would be wetlands, could you use that towards green space to where you'd be able to fully utilize the remaining 10 acres? Could that 10 acres?
The argument was going to be that you're gonna have a required acreage for open space in a subdivision of that size, and a 30-lot subdivision, that is gonna be a very small acreage, but what we were writing was that 50% of that very small acreage has to be upland, it has to be a place where you can actually recreate.
And all I was suggesting is that recreating by viewing it has some value, even if you can't walk on it.
Yeah, you can't build a sidewalk on it.
From the, from the, from the planning perspective, that is sold in upcharges on those lots, because if you can't, if every single lot can't get to that wetland, and every single lot doesn't have a view of that wetland, then it's not open to every single lot. You're gonna back lots up to that wetland, and so you're saying that because those, let's just say half of them, 15 of those 30 lots can see it, they can count extra density because of it, and from a planning perspective, I'm gonna tell you that if every lot doesn't have access to it, it doesn't count, because you've privatized that thing.
Ricky, if we're talking about the idea behind why we have a density anyway, is it to make sure the lots are big enough, or is it to control the total population in a region? There's gotta be a reason to have a density rule.
It's the way they painted the map. I mean, it wasn't logical when they did it the first time, but we're stuck with it, so we've got this large area of our parish that's been granted three units per acre, and there was no logic when that was done, and so to ask me why we would hold onto it now, you know, it's, to me, we have to say why, the land can't carry that many units. The infrastructure that we have can't carry that many units. We're trying to allow them to build smaller units to get closer to that number, but I don't know that we should over-densify the property, because that property is straddled with wetlands or water.
And all I'm saying is, it's not really over, not over-densifying it, it's just concentrating the density on a smaller part of it.
That's what this would eliminate.
The overall density in, within the 20 acres is not affected. If they're all built high on one acre, or they're spread out over it, it's the same amount of people on the 20 acres.
Right, but I'm telling you physically can't build on those other 10 acres.
I understand that, I was just using a.
Right. It's to an urban context, because when you start to take those other 10 acres, it's sort of a transfer of development rights, you're saying that I'm gonna transfer those 10 acres that I physically can't develop onto the 10 acres that I can develop, that percentage needs to be either very, very low, so that you don't encourage people with big tracts of wetland to then, if I've got 100 acres and 90 acres are wetland, I've only got 10 acres, but now all of a sudden, I can build 300 lots on 10 acres. I mean.
We've discussed before where minimum lot size is like our failsafe, 10,500 square foot, that's our failsafe for not allowing it to be shifted to that 10 acres.
We're going a lot lower than that with this code.
We're going a lot lower than?
10,500.
How so?
By allowing smaller lots.
By doing the net density?
That's kind of in the next couple of sections, when they have a variance in the size of the lots, is that correct?
Right. Our current smallest lot is a 70 by 150, plus or minus. The tables, which haven't been included in the last couple of packets, because they were in the first set, you get down to a 50 by 110? 50 by 120. I mean, we're getting to a much smaller lot, so we're allowing, we're exchanging the smaller lot and the increased density, but we're saying, if the land's not buildable, you can't calculate it for your density.
Ricky, I know that you've done a lot of research on this, and you've found some examples of some things we're trying to demonstrate here, in some areas, and I would hate to think that we're looking at reinventing the wheel. There is probably something out there like this, or we're taking the good aspects of several different examples, and sort of compiling them, which might be a good thing. I mean, we're learning from others, we're not trying to invent something and figuring out if it's gonna work or not, we really do wanna understand whether this works, this concept works in other areas, that's why we, I kind of insisted that we look. That's why we, I kind of insisted that we look for, for other areas, and I still, I still hope that we continue to try to, to look for something like this. Or to, as you're doing now, take the best aspects of, of other developments, and try to incorporate them into some unified plan. But in the end, it's going to be whether this concept sells or not. It all comes, sort of comes down to money, in terms of developers. Are we, is a developer going to look at this in the end and say, I can do as well or better with this sort of development, and the people will, will buy and accept this than I could do with, with the traditional development we've seen in Ascension Parish? It kind of comes down to that. So, have we talked to developers in the area? I know we've probably talked to a couple, some have given their comments back to us, but we haven't done that sort of outreach, really.
No, not yet, I mean, still hammering out the details.
We're not, yeah, we're not to that point yet, but that, that is part of the, the idea. Because we want to, we want to get that, their input, and, and, you know, how they're going to, how they're going to react to this.
I mean, I can tell you just off the top of my head, they're going to react negatively. And because anytime you change the rules, and the rules appear to be more complicated, then yes, they're going to be against it. The, the idea of pulling from other parts of other codes, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be sort of brutally honest, the reason most of our subdivisions are the way they are is because base zoning, and the base subdivision code allows them to. When you go to other parts of the country where you see more interesting subdivision design, it's because their base zoning does not allow it. They have to do something different to develop, to the intensity or, or density that they want, which typically requires the PUD, the SPUDs, the TNDs, the, the interesting projects. And so what we are trying to do is say, what if all subdivisions in Ascension Parish had to do something better than what's always been done? And so, the first things that are, from a planning perspective, that we're going to look for is parks and open space, sidewalks and street trees. And so if I'm going to ask a developer to provide those things that actually create a place, what can I give them? I can give them smaller lots, which is going to increase their density. The question, though, is where do you cap it? And if I'm capping it at net developable, that is the national standard. Determine how much the property can be built on, and that's the density you can get to. If you don't get anywhere close to your base density, well then, that's the fault of the property you purchased. Because that property is not developable.
I think when we first talked about this, you took a, a standard, let's call it a standard subdivision in the area, and, and you took that density, and then you played with that, and, and made it look more like this concept of different lot sizes and all. Came up with the same density in the end, didn't you? For the, for the whole development.
I came up with a higher density.
More lots. More lots. I, I mean, that, that's, that should be an attractive thing. All, all I'm saying is that I, I support us going forward with this, but practically speaking, in the end, it's got to sell both to the residents of the parish, people who want to move into the parish, and want to, and want to live in, in a subdivision like this. Now, I live in a subdivision on a lake, I love the lake and all that, but my house is on a lake, not all houses are in subdivision on a lake. We have no sidewalks, we have no other green space, other than the lake behind my house, and, and I would much prefer to have something like this with sidewalks and, and some other park space or green space. So personally, I love it. Whether or not it's going to pass the, you know, the, the test of time.
Unfortunately, the only way, the only way to test it is to let it fail on its own, I guess, and build one.
No, I think, I think we're doing the right thing, I think we're trying to learn from other areas.
I think ultimately, if we can come to the rules that we want all subdivisions to follow, and the development community doesn't like those rules, then what that means is every development that comes forward will have to be a PUD. Which isn't necessarily a bad thing, because that means they get to write their own rules. And then we can determine if we like the rules that they're crafting, based on this standard that we've established for the subdivisions we want to see. And if what they do says, well, we don't necessarily want to do 50% of max of one lot size, then you guys can decide when that PUD's approved, okay, we'll allow 100% of all one lot size. Do you want to allow longer block lengths? Do you want to allow, you know, which things from our subdivision code are you going to allow them to not do? And if we just, we determine over time that all we're seeing are PUDs, because they don't like this, that, or the other rule, then yeah, we can go back and amend the subdivision code to take out those things that are offensive to the development community. But I don't know that planning for appeasing the development community when you're revising the rules, is going to solve the problem that we're seeing is subdivisions that don't, there's no there there, they're just places for houses.
I don't think we're talking about appeasing the development community, but I think we're talking about not driving them away. You know, we've got to at least offer a, a solution that's going to allow a developer to, to continue to make money and do well here. There, there, we're going to have more development here in Ascension Parish, whether we, we can either plan for it or not plan for it, we're going to have more development, there's going to be a lot of, of expansion here, and a lot more people are going to want to move
And, and people will come for other reasons other than our development code, and whatever our development code is, they're going to come.
I, I was in a lot of master plan meetings, where a lot of people said, we don't want another 100,000 people in this parish. And if our development code is one of the reasons why they don't come, well, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, because that means that the ones that do come, the communities are going to be better. I, I just don't have a problem with development slowing down, but it's better.
Interesting take. All right, the next four or five paragraphs all have to do with the mixture of, of lot sizes and, and things such as that, and I think we've talked about that already, are there any?
Well, okay, so, the argument that I've heard from the development community is, we don't want to do that. We want to just build the one-house size in our subdivisions, and we don't want you telling us that we have to build different house sizes. And our argument is, we're not telling you to build different house sizes, we're telling you to put different lot sizes in. If the community that's coming in to buy in that development says, we want the same narrow house that you're building on the 50, on the 70, well then that's up to you as the builder to decide. But then, once again, as we debated it amongst the three of us here, we said, well, is that, are those the things that we start to eliminate? Do we eliminate the, the max number of units in a subdivision that are one lot size? Do we eliminate the three different lot widths from a subdivision? Do we eliminate no more than 20 lots of a single housing can be together or clumped together? Because, you know, in the examples we've seen, that's, that's the standard. We're going to put all of our 50s, because those people can't afford to buy a 60-foot lot, we're going to put them over here and segregate them. We're going to take our 60s, there's our middle, and we're going to put them here, and all of our, our muckety mucks, our 70s and 80s, we're going to put over here, and we segregate these houses. And what we're saying is, we want them to mix, blend those houses together, so that as those communities develop and evolve over time, you do have that mix, and you, you do have that, the pattern that doesn't repeat itself, but it's sort of a random hodgepodge, or a potpourri, if you will, of houses in there. You know, that's something that we need to decide, is it, is it important? Do we want to trade that off and say, it's not important?
Okay. Next item we see is street interconnectivity, and I'm sure that will attract some interest.
From the commission?
From, well, from the public, I think, from the commission. And of course, when people move into a subdivision, they want that subdivision to be a private place, and only accessible by the people within the subdivision. The, the providers of, say, school bus service, and ambulances, and, and other service vehicles want to be able to access from one subdivision to the other, because it, the, the traffic in so many of our main arteries is, is so congested that it's very hard for them to get in and out of adjacent subdivisions. So that is the issue to be debated, right?
Yes, sir. And, you know, you'll hear it amongst your peers, and you'll hear it amongst the community, that I live in a subdivision, that I don't care if it was planned to have four exits, we like the one exit we have, we like the two exits we have, we don't want those other streets tying into any future houses, and so don't tie us in. And from planner speak, I'm going to argue that point is the garbage, the school bus, the police, the, the fire. Those guys like to have multiple routes, they might, they like to have ways to get in and out of subdivisions in case there's accidents or other things. And I don't even know how to write the language to say, well, you can do it, but you don't have to. It's either you do it or you don't, and I, I just don't know that there's a happy medium. The, the argument's going to be, well, what if the new community doesn't want to tie into the old community? Well, I don't know that you allow them to make that call, but what if the old community doesn't want the new community to tie into it? Well then, do you require a percentage? Do you require a, a majority? Do you, I mean, how do you decide whether or not you allow them to connect, or force them to connect, one way or the other?
Ricky, on some of the statements you just made, at our last meeting, one of your suggestions was to put your pin to this idea and, and get some feedback, and, and I did exactly that, especially on this connectivity issue. And, and some of the answers that I received were on the lines of, well, you're going to change the subdivision development code, you need to plan for the buses and the police and the fire to have access to it without the connectivity. You have that option. Some of the feedback I got was, I don't have a problem with interconnectivity within the same development phases or, or plans, but my problem is, I don't want to be connected to a subdivision that doesn't have a homeowners association that requires the exact same, or close to the same regulations that we do. I don't want to be connected to a subdivision that has, doesn't have the same amenities that we do. Or, or, you know, I make a major investment when I buy my home, and five years, 10 years down the road, I find out my subdivision is going to be tied into a subdivision that doesn't require the same homeowners association rules, doesn't have the same value, property value, or home values, because it's a, a different type of development. And, and that's the concern. And when I say, well, you know, you've got to consider the fact that we need to make it accessible to the safety and the emergency units and school bus transportation, well, you have that power. With your new development code, make them accessible. Does it have to be through from one subdivision to another? And to give you even a further statement that I got was, the fact that they're not so concerned about if this new developmental code is put in place, because then all the subdivisions will meet the same codes, and they have no problem with it. So the, the future development is not in question. It's, what about the ones that are already in place? Example I got was, you've had at least eight to a dozen locations where connectivity was put in place and then changed. Evidently, the connectivity is not something that they want, or it's not working the way it was intended to work. So that's some of the feedback I got, and, and, and so I think, overall, what I was told was, to just say where feasible is too vague of a way to explain it, we need some definition better on how you're going to determine where it's really something that's valuable and needed, and not just the fact whether it's feasible. Feasible to who? The, the, the one side of the subdivision, the other side of the subdivision? Feasible to the parish, and maybe not to the homeowners? So I, I think we need to do a little bit more work on that, I'm not going to say connectivity can't work, and shouldn't work in some cases, but from the feedback I got, there's a whole lot of questions about how do you determine where it's really feasible, and where can we do it without connectivity, with the development? So that's just some of the thoughts that I got from the public when I talked with them since last meeting.
Any of the comments about that? We can go on to a few more of these items, I don't know that we can cover the whole deal, because we've got another meeting after this. We'll talk maybe about sidewalks and, and parks. I don't think that the, any residents would object to sidewalks in a subdivision. In fact, I wish my subdivision had sidewalks. And it, it does have some nice green space, and I like that, and I, I think that's valuable too. So I don't know that we'd get a whole lot of objection from the general public on that.
Yeah, the, the one comment I got from a developer was that there can be a more permanent non-paved trail section, and so what they're going to do is get me their cross-section for how that is developed. It involved several layers of compaction, and then some other layers of stone and whatnot, and, and a, a trim, a railing, that keeps it all contained. So, you know, the, the idea of only paved trails was because all the trails that have been built wash out after a year, but if we get something that's a more permanent, non-paved trail, then I, I'm open to that idea.
And it may be more attractive than a, than a concrete path as well. And maybe we can talk about the trees at this point, requirements? Again, I don't know that people would object unless there's some problem that the trees would cause.
You know, the, the, the greenway or the parkway is that area between the back of curb and the sidewalk. And so, when we start talking about our local street cross-section, that parkway is where we would ideally want to plant those street trees.
How wide is that?
Well, ideally, it would be eight feet wide, and you put your tree right in the middle. So an eight-foot wide parkway on either side of the road is 16 feet. 24 feet of pavement and curb and gutter is 40 feet. You have five foot of sidewalk on each side, and that's a 50-foot cross-section. So, right now, I think our standard cross-section is 50, but I don't believe the greenways are as big, I think our pavement section is bigger, so there's some...
Give and take.
Right, that we could do in there. And our, a 24-foot with, including the curb and gutter is narrower than we currently do, because your curb and gutter is about four feet, two feet on either side, so that's 20 feet of pavement and four feet of curb and gutter. So, but an eight-foot parkway is typically where you'd want to put a street tree, with the street tree four foot from the back of curb and four foot from the sidewalk.
Sort of on that subject, because you mentioned it, curb and gutter, are we requiring curb and gutter?
That's required today. You can't build an open-ditch subdivision in Ascension Parish anymore.
Any other questions or discussion about the, the trees? Okay. Last item you have here is the amount of fill, and we've had some discussion over that. Maybe we can leave that to another meeting, because we've got people here for the zoning meeting, and we want to go ahead and, and do that. So let's, let's conclude the staff report at this point, and we'll come back next meeting and, and maybe address that issue in a few, revisit some of the other ones. All right, agenda item number 11, an engineering staff report.
The first thing on here is, we just want to revise the testing requirements, and as you can see, the, we list out what the requirements would change to, but basically, we're not, the requirements, we're not changing the requirements that have to be done on the compaction of the trenches, it's just that we've only required them to submit the reports to us for the mid and the, and the top levels, and now we want them submitted for every one-foot compaction level. They currently compact, they're supposed to be compacting every foot, we just want the reports to show that they're doing it.
Okay. And to make this happen, we'd need an ordinance from the parish government, from parish council?
Uh, yeah.
This would be a change in there?
This will be a change to the, to our code.
Okay.
Tim, this requirement of every foot, this is not something that's any different than what most, most require, this is...
Uh, no, that's, that's a...
This is just a standard?
That's a standard from the, you know, basically, we follow the DOT, a way to install the, the sanitary sewer, we're just requesting the reports to actually be submitted.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so this would take then a public hearing if we wanted to...
Yeah, yeah, next month it'll come to a public hearing.
So what we need to do then at this meeting is move to, to set up on the agenda, next meeting, a public hearing to discuss and approve or not approve this proposed ordinance. Do I hear a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mizo.
Second. Mr. Bishop, any objection? Okay, so we'd like to have that placed on the agenda of the next meeting. All right, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Calendar?
Second.
Mr. Hori? Okay, uh, meeting is adjourned. We'll take about a five-minute break, we'll start the... We'll take about a five-minute break, we'll start the zoning meeting at five minutes to seven. Appreciate the patience of you people who came for the zoning meeting, we'll start that in five minutes. Thank you.